Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to What's Brewing? The Ben Chambers Town Hall. And of course, as many of you know, we are so grateful for our sponsors who help us bring this on way to our members, but also to the community. Miller Lumber, Sun West Builders, and Volcanic Theater Pub. Big round of applause to all of them. Also, I'd like to quickly remind you, or let you know, excuse me, that this is being recorded by 88.9 KPOV, and they will be rebroadcasting it this Thursday at noon, as well as on their website. So, watch and follow there. I know also Courtney is doing a great job right now, making sure that we have it on our YouTube channel, which will also be free for those to watch on the internet. And she's tweeting live. What's your hashtag tonight, Courtney?
Deschutes Debate.
Deschutes Debate, if you'd like to follow along. I know Robby's in the room, he's a good tweeter, Twitter guy, hashtag guy. Anyway, right? Twitter face.
Twitter face.
Also like you to stay tuned. We'll do our final candidates forum next month, October 7th, that Tuesday evening with the City Council for Bend. And again, that's always the first Tuesday. Also keep in mind that we are taking time and reservations for the first ever Election Mixer. How many of you have heard of this so far? The Election Mixer, right? A few of you? So, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's simply that. From 5:00 to 7:00 PM, we meet here, you get a ticket, you get a brew, a beer, share some views, and it's completely mixing with not only the candidates, but those who are currently elected and our community. So, mark your calendar for September 18th for the Election Mixer, our first ever. And then the Veterans Parade is coming up. We've taken that on this year. Make sure you pass the word on that, as you know, in November. And the Golf Tournament, Robin, right, is right around the corner, the 26th. Everybody loves the Golf Tournament, right? The Chamber Golf Tournament's a blast. So, those items as well. Real quickly, I'd like to thank my comrades who are helping us moderate tonight. This has got a new agenda to it. I think you'll be pleased, and one of them will certainly get engaged. I'd like to thank Erin Schweitzer from The Source, and Kelly Blyer from News Talk 1110, KBND, for helping me co-moderate. I'm Jamie Christman, I'm the Government Affairs and Leadership Bend Director for the Ben Chamber, and we're excited to put this on for you. Here's the format. So, our candidates will have two minutes for opening comments, each. Then, we will begin with about nine questions in totality between the three of us. This format, we are adding the potential for a follow-up of 30 seconds if we feel that the candidate was not as specific, or there needed to be greater clarification on the question. And then they have an opportunity after that section to ask two questions of each other, and we'll get some insight there. And then they'll have their closing comments. Once that portion is complete, which will be approximately 6:30 or an hour from now, we will then close it, honor them, and thank them, but then we'll hit the floor again with Q&amp;A from the audience. We'll take 15 minutes with the audience for you to ask questions. So, be thinking about those now, or listen to their responses and their comments during the moderated portion, and then we'll come out with the floor and the microphone. I ask you please keep it to a question, and then we'll end with about 15 minutes worth of networking. So, nice new format. What do you think of that, right? Get you engaged, little opportunity here? So, at this time, if you would please help me welcome to the stage as we get started our candidates. Incumbent Commissioner Tony DeBoe and opponent current Ben City Councilor Jody Barham. All right. So, this is how this is going to work. Just a reminder, each gets your opening comments of two minutes. Tony, as the incumbent, we get to start with you for that. All right?
Is it time?
It's just about time. And then also, just a quick, just a quick reminder that as well, both candidates, you do get an additional 30 seconds to clarify when we ask the follow-up question, which is you. So, just to be, just to be really clear on that. Commissioner DeBoe, we'd love to hear your opening comments, please.
As one of your Deschutes County Commissioners, I have been successful in keeping your county on a sustainable course. I have met challenges with a deliberate, thoughtful, and common sense manner while keeping you informed and involved. My number one priority is economic diversity and jobs. High tech, renewable energy, wood products, biomass, efficient building practices, general aviation, and of course tourism, all have great potential here. I welcome Oregon State University and the new workforce and opportunities being created here. Deschutes County is a great place to live, work, and play. Our region is respected around the state for providing appropriate services in a cost-effective manner. As your county commissioner, I work with all of Deschutes County to preserve our high quality of life, to fight for our land use rights, and ensure everyone is treated on a fair and consistent basis. My life experience has been a benefit in this leadership position. I earned a bachelor's degree in electronics technology from Northern Michigan University. Since college, I've been involved in multiple careers with small and large companies. I was an observatory operator and software engineer as a contractor for the United States Air Force. I also worked as a research and development, in research and development, as a computational biologist for Celtech R&amp;D in Seattle. My priorities are jobs in the economy, cost-effective, and appropriate government services, as well as protecting our lifestyle. I am open, honest, and approachable. I am a family man, a small business owner, with a high-tech background. I have provided effective and proven leadership.
Great job, Mr. Commissioner DeBoe. Thank you. Well, I was noticing, the time, you kept within the time, I really appreciate that. All right. Councilor Barham, we'd love to hear your opening comments, please.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight and hosting this forum. I was born in Redmond over 41 years ago to real estate developers. It's true. My dad taught me how to swing a hammer, frame a house, hang drywall, and lay baseboard with the quality workmanship that was a hallmark of his work and his dad's. My mom taught me the importance of organization, how to act like a lady, even when I might not want to, and to not take myself so seriously. I have an amazing extended family in this county that helped shape who I am today as I grew up living throughout this county. Today, I work as an educational assistant with special needs students. I've been married almost 20 years and have two teenagers. I understand the decisions I make today as a public servant impact future generations. I'm asking you to elect me because we need a commissioner in this position that is willing to represent the whole county and willing to lead, giving full-time attention to serving you. Having lived in Terribon, Redmond, Bend, and Sun River, I understand the diversity within our county. Serving at the City of Bend for nearly a decade, first as a planning commissioner and now as a city councillor, my colleagues have twice appointed me mayor pro temp, recognizing my collaborative leadership style. In addition, I serve on Ben 2030's Board of Directors and as a Visit Bend Board Member. I also serve as a member of the Central Oregon Cities Organization, meeting with the mayors of the tri-county area monthly, collaborating on leveraging resources for our region, and going to Salem to work on issues. Finding positive solutions is something I've been doing for our community and will continue to do if elected to the county commission. I will serve with integrity, humility, and transparency. I will work ensuring livability, expanding higher education, and enhancing a vibrant economy.
Thank you. You as well did a great job staying within the timeframe, we appreciate it. All right, so here we start, kind of a softball question, you get 90 seconds to answer, and Councilor Barham, we'll start with you. So, with regard to budget in the county, each summer, we see larger and hotter wildfires. We have other emergency preparedness to consider. Is the county doing enough currently to prepare for these emergencies, for these kinds of disasters that are be, that will be forthcoming?
Thanks for the question. Is the county doing enough? Well, given what we experienced in the Two Bowls Fire, and the responsiveness of our Sheriff's Department, and the coordination that I experienced as the mayor pro temp, I believe the county is doing a lot. I think, as far as enough goes, we'll continue lobbying at the federal level for funding, for thinning, and for management of our forest lands, so that we're preventing fires from occurring, or when they do, we're better able to manage them. That's something that I've been working on with Senators Wyden and Merkley, and would continue doing as your next county commissioner. So, I think people will often say there's room to grow, and I agree with that. And that's going to take partnerships. We saw that when we responded to the Two Bowls Fire, working with our Oregon Department of Forestry, the US Forest Service, private landowners, and the municipalities. I was so impressed that, given the gravity of that situation, things went the way they were supposed to. No structures were lost, and no lives were lost. And that's something that we need to continue working towards.
Thank you for your answer. And just to be clear, I know you're still thinking on the first one. Just to clarify, do you think there will be any sacrifices that might need to be made in the budget to make that all happen?
Sacrifices in our county budget to make that happen? Given that the firefighting budgets are, when fires occur on federal lands and state lands come from state and federal agencies, that's where we're going to need to leverage funding. I don't know that there's going to need to be cuts at the county level to mitigate for that.
Thank you. The same will serve. You can work that into your 90 seconds, or take the additional 30 if I ask.
Sure, very good. Well, and yeah, about $6 million was spent in a week out there at this Two Bowls Fire. Very quickly, we responded, we have great firefighters, our public safety, search and rescue, evacuation processes. The easy part is spending those dollars to protect our community. Luckily, we have not lost a structure in Deschutes County since the early 90s from forest fire. We do invest in our county forester, we want to be known as a county that is very proactive in managing our forests. 79% of our county is owned by the Forest Service or BLM publicly owned. And think about the opportunity, there's a lot of resources that used to be utilized out there, we're putting out these fires very aggressively. We need to be able to create jobs, pull out those resources. And I'm not just referring to large logs, I think with the biomass, the understory, the different products that could be created. When you think of the fuel supply that's just laying on the forest floor, there's got to be an opportunity for those to be created, and jobs and wealth creation right here in Central Oregon. So, I do worry about the budget. Deschutes County proper's budget is not really effective. We're not in a spot where that's going to, if we have a large forest fire, it's going to blow out. We do have resources like our Sheriff's Office, search and rescue. We do invest in management and relationships with our Forest Service and BLM, so we can make the future better.
Thank you. All right. The next question has to do with smart growth, and we will start with Tony first. Everyone talks about smart growth, but to what, what form, to you, but to you, what form would that take? How would you navigate the tension of staying a small town versus economic vitality? And I have a follow-up.
Wonderful. So, smart growth, that could mean anything to anybody, if you think about it, two words, smart growth. We do have a land use system here in the state of Oregon that defines an urban growth boundary, an expansion process. I have been involved with the incorporation of the city of Le Pine, in fact, so I've seen what had, not a lot of people have been through that process, how to make a new city. Bend was incorporated in 1905, and it has grown. It's been very interesting to see the huge success in the 80s and 90s. We're still managing that expansive growth that happened in there. So, smart growth would fit into the urban growth boundary process, which is a shame that it's still going today. Many years ago, there was plans put together and a proposal put in place for the city of Bend to grow, and it's a shame that hasn't happened yet. Smart growth includes a balanced community, though also, jobs, livability, transportation systems. You know, water and sewer are also very important, so just the balance of what makes our community. Seven aspects of a community includes arts and culture, and public safety, and all the different aspects. But yeah, smart growth is going to take a good balanced community and just help it grow over time.
And the follow-up. Temporary venues are bumping up against our noise ordinance. How would you reconcile these concerts and events that bring in tourists with neighborhood livability?
Temporary venues?
Concerts coming into an area.
Like the Volcanic Pub Theater? I'm sorry, I guess I don't have a feel for that. So, you're referring to events in a neighborhood?
Or the county, or, I mean, certainly Volcanic Theater Pub has dealt with complaints on noise. And so, to have events like this, how do you reconcile those two?
Well, so I guess, you know, relating to county business, the commercial events on exclusive farm use land, referring to weddings, and we dealt with that, right, when we got started, when I got started as a commissioner. There's a balance. Beautiful summer, sunny summer night, sun stays out till 10 o'clock at night in the late June, there are some opportunities to really enjoy the summer sunset and the weather. I do support that, but I don't support it as an aggressive commercial event that happens every night of the summer. We found a balance when we did put out our commercial events on the E.F.U. land, people can have six weddings on a certain size property, and then a larger property can have a more liberal permitting.
All right, do you want me to repeat the question? First of all, it's about smart growth, your vision for smart growth, how you deal with the tension between staying a small town versus economic vitality.
Well, first, I'll address that as your city councillor, and then I'll tell you how I would address that as a county commissioner. So, first, the form of smart growth as a city councillor is managing how your urban density is going to expand into the county lands. That's something I have been working on for a very long time, and working right now, we're looking at an April 2016 deadline with the state of Oregon to finish that task. It takes into account what our community values, what choices they want in the market as far as housing supply and business lands, and what you do for economic improvement for your community. That's what started this whole thing with the city of Bend. And I think Bend isn't alone. Redmond did a great job guessing where they wanted to grow. Redmond looked ahead to the future and got through their process very quickly. Bend is actually going very quickly compared to other cities in our state that have taken eight to 10 to 15 years to get through the process. So, as your city councillor, I've been working on that. As a county commissioner, I would also continue working on that with our cities as they look to grow. I would actually like to take Tammy Baynes, I would ask her if she would relieve herself of the duty of the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Task Force for Bend. Because she's been unable to attend some of our meetings, I would like to step into that role, having the background and the understanding for Bend. So, is my time up on? I thought I got 90 seconds on this one. No? Okay, thank you.
And follow-up, yes, founding noise ordinance.
So, noise ordinance, we start again with another 30 seconds. Okay. So, again, as a county commissioner, this is something that you deal with in agricultural rural settings versus an urban city setting. As your city councillor, we did revisit the noise ordinance. As a county commissioner, I do support having events on farmland within reason. And that's where you have to preserve the rural values that we're hearing from the community right now through the agricultural land study that they want to retain. So, it is a balance between the two different uses, that people that want to utilize their property and people that want to enjoy a quiet evening.
Thank you. Councilor Barham, we're going to start this one. What role does the county have in supporting the development of OSU Cascades?
I think the county has a critical role in helping develop OSU Cascades. Some of you heard at our previous forum, I was critical of the county early on in the process, when the city stepped forward and contributed money to a fundraising campaign. When chambers of commerce like this one donated $50,000 plus a $50,000 match. When businesses and leaders in our community stepped up on fundraising, I really wanted the county to show leadership in that moment. They chose to take a different approach, a more cautious approach to that. And I think their staff did a great job, and does a great job now, working with potential for OSU Cascades, regardless of where it lands, because I can't talk about that as a city councillor. I think the county could show stronger leadership through partnerships with the cities that want higher education, not just OSU Cascades, but COCC, that just opened a technology center in Redmond. Providing higher education opportunities throughout this region, not just in the city that I've been serving, is going to be critical, so that we have an educated workforce to feed into industries that we want to see here.
My follow-up. Should county residents pay for the increased burden on transit created by OSU?
County residents pay for increased burden? I think that's a question the voters would have to decide. I think that if we're going to ask that question of the county voters, then it needs to be on a ballot initiative, and then we need to execute, and then put into place implementing the will of the voters.
Let me clarify. So, by saying should county residents, I mean, as part of the general fund, which they already pay taxes for, would you be in favor of allocating funds above and beyond what's already allocated for the county roads program or new transit programs to aid OSU Cascades?
Transit to an OSU Cascades campus, regardless of where it lands, I would support increased funding for transit in general, because I think it's a key component to our economic vitality. I think having people have access to getting to and from work, and access to and from education is going to be very important. And so, I would support, like I have as a city councillor, consistent funding for public transit.
Commissioner DeBoe.
OSU Cascades is the number one priority here in Central Oregon. Ben Chambers, the city council, the citizens, a lot of members of our community have provided dollars for the project, the philanthropic fundraising that was done from our community. The goal was $4 million, and $4.7 million was raised. Very exciting. As commissioners, we did have the choice to maybe open the people's checkbook and write a check toward that philanthropic fund. We knew, when the, when the location was put out, there was going to be a Simpson Roundabout and the properties that were talked about, the county is going to be in the middle of this for many, many years. So, now I'm referring to the very specific location. In fact, today, the site was cleared from its land use request. So, the hearings officer announced that it is an approved site, may be appealed, so that I understand that it may so go through the city council. But knowing that the site is becoming more clear, we have a landfill right next door, the Simpson landfill, 70 acres, 10 acres plus, 46 acres plus 70 acres, we're talking about a pretty good footprint in the future. So, this is a long way down the road. What we knew as county commissioners, if it was located there, we will be in there very involved for many, many years. I'm referring to the people's land, the Deschutes County Simpson landfill, which is closed right now, but if that could be part of the campus someday, of course, it's going to be a mitigation cost, it's going to be a cost to the people, you know, what would the value of that be? So, I'm proud to say we did not open up the people's checkbook for that, and we're going to be involved for many years.
And the follow-up about paying for the increased burden on transit, do you support that?
So, I think of transit as a bus system. So, the city of Bend, I support the city inside of its urban growth boundary to have a bus system. So, we're asking, does the larger county pay for that? I'm not supporting any support of that at all. I do support community connectors, and we can get to that at some point. Downtown Sisters to downtown Bend, you can get to the campus. Prineville from Madras, Redmond, Le Pine, all those opportunities we have. So, community connectors, yes, not a broad tax rate across, it was being discussed, a tri-county tax rate was being proposed, so that hasn't happened.
Okay, starting with you, Commissioner DeBoe. What is your opinion on the piping of our canals?
So, we do have a land use decision that's in front of us on that, so I'm going to speak to that a little bit, though. This whole area was empowered to be a livable area by the water that was supplied, it's 1890s and 1900s, when the water was diverted and the irrigation was provided out to these rural areas. Very important. We've had, it's controversial, when you have a water feature in your backyard, it's a water feature, it's an irrigation canal, and the irrigation districts, you know, may want to pipe that at some point. It is an outright use in most areas, there's a controversial discussion going on right now, and some mediations being discussed. I do support piping in the big picture. Efficiency in that water, making sure it's not draining away, making sure it's not evaporating. In fact, one of the most valuable things we can do with water here in Deschutes County is get it to the North Unit Irrigation District. It's kind of counterintuitive, but we don't have real effective and profitable farming here. If you think about it, Jefferson County is where all the crops and the value is being created for farming. So, protecting that water, conserving it as aggressively as possible.
Councilor Barham?
So, canal piping, and what do I think about it? Well, first, I have to disagree with Tony that Jefferson County is the only place with valuable crops. I think we have some valuable crops here in Deschutes County, because I get some of those for my kids and for my family to feed them. So, I do think we have a strong agricultural community here, and I just wanted to be clear on that. When it comes to canal piping, I think we can all agree that water conservation is a good idea, and something that we should do. And I think our agricultural community knows this in spades. Sorry, I feel like I'm cutting out. I think that piping is a good choice and a tool to accomplish that. And if hydropower can be added to that, then it's an even better long-term cost benefit to the end user, in my opinion. Specific to the current issue before the commission, I'm hopeful that COID will proceed forward with their project with the support of the homeowners.
Thank you. We will start with Jody on this one. This is about fairground funds. The Deschutes County voters approved a 1% increase in the room tax from 7% to 80% that will go toward marketing. It is expected to raise about $350,000 a year. The fair usually gets between $150,000 and $300,000 from the county's general fund to actually run the fairgrounds. Will you be continuing that funding at that level?
Great question. Yes.
Do I elaborate?
I'll elaborate on that. I think our fairgrounds are phenomenal, and what they attract to this region is incredible. And so, I was thrilled that the voters approved to add the 1% for that. I think that we need to do a better job of attracting large-scale events to our Deschutes County fairgrounds. So, I would continue funding, because what they have on the ground needs so much work. It's also an aging event center. It needs help, and it can't rely solely on the sponsors that show up for it. So, I do think it's going to take an extended commitment from the county to continue working on that, and use these new monies to attract and bring in tourism dollars to our region.
Tony?
Our fairgrounds was built by a bond measure that the citizens voted on about 20 years ago. 15 years ago, it was opened up, and we have the best armed fairgrounds in the state. We have the biggest county fair in the state. Very exciting facility. We're not talking about those fair activities the week in August, we're talking about the whole year. So, the 1% of transit room tax dollars going to $350,000 in marketing is going to really empower us to utilize that facility across the west coast and even nationally, just for larger events to bring to town. So, finals of BMX, and some different things, different events like that. I do support a little bit of capital dollars, referring to $100,000 or $200,000 or $300,000 going from our general fund, capital investment for the maintenance and upkeep of that facility. We are in a great spot with a facility that hasn't hit its downward trend yet. We're going to be able to keep it up. $100,000, we'll paint a building, or change carpet in a large building, maybe change some lights, so we're not even talking that much. That is a multimillion dollar facility, large budget, very active. We should all be very proud of our facility. So, yes, I do support some general fund dollars in maintenance of the fairgrounds.
Commissioner DeBoe, come back for you. With interest in resort development picking up in the county, what are some lessons that you learned from the previous resort expansion in the last decade that can be used to govern going forward?
Destination resorts are real special. Deschutes County is known as a destination resort county. We are, once again, we're the leader in the number of destination resorts, the success of our destination resorts. A lot of financial activity happens through those destination resorts. A lot of financial activity happens through those destination resorts. I can say the time before I was a commissioner, our legal counsel and our commissioners required very specific items to be in place for the destination resorts that we're developing. So referring to Tetheroe and Pronghorn at this point. So the requirements on their development have been kept in place throughout the recession. Everything stopped in its tracks in about 2007, '08, '09, but we are keeping all of those items on track. So we've learned that just being true to the destination resort land use requirements has worked out very well. Destination resorts may or may not be our future. We'll find out if the market supports more golf courses, more overnight lodging. We don't want to just utilize this as a rural neighborhood expansion option. We have huge successful stories, though, in Deschutes County, Sun River, Blackbeet Ranch, and Eagle Crest.
Do you support continuing the overnight lodging component that is a part of that template going forward with resorts that would be planned for the future?
Yes, yes. So that has been converted from two, two to two and a half overnight lodging units required for homes sold. So the density went up just a little bit, but I do support overnight lodging.
Councilor Barron, will you repeat the question?
No, I think I got it. Before I answer, though, I wanted to finish up on the fairgrounds. I didn't know if you all knew how much they give back to the community in public events and that they just put solar on this past year to, it's going to reduce their cost, which makes our dollars stretch farther. With destination resorts, you know, Deschutes County has seven of the nine large resorts that are designated in this state, and I have to tell you, I appreciate them, they helped our family. My mom actually sold timeshares at Eagle Crest and Sun River, and the sand for the sand traps in Eagle Crest came from my grandpa's gravel pit. So I have a history here with destination resorts. I think going forward, they have a tremendous impact on our tourism economy and they're a great taxpayer. So I support having what we have now. I do also, to answer your question on overnight lodging, support that at destination resorts as it's currently written and think we need to grow with what we have before developing more.
Okay, Jody, we get to start with you on this one. Let's be straightforward, it was an interesting debate last spring. What do you think might be some challenges in the transition of the DA's office?
Good question. Some challenges? Well, right now, what I'm seeing from what I'm reading in the paper is that our current DA isn't coming to some of the meetings that are being presented before the Board of Commissioners. So I think there's going to be a challenging communication as the transition occurs. I think going from one elected official to another can be difficult or it can be a little easier. I think if I'm elected to your county commission, I expect to work really well with Toni on a transition. I expect him to show up and help with that. I think with our DA's office, we aren't seeing that, and I'm excited actually about the future for our DA's office, that the incoming DA has said there won't be a lot of turnover, that he supports the team that's in place now. That is something that is refreshing and that I appreciate about that leadership style. So I'm looking forward to a strong DA's office going forward. And I've supported our current DA and what he's been doing in protecting our community. And I think as we move forward with our new DA, John Hummel, it's going to continue to grow in a positive direction.
Thank you, Councilor Barron. Mr. DeBonne?
So since the, we know that this DA position is going to be transferring, I have communicated with John Hummel and we already do have a good working relationship. When it comes to the district attorney's office, we want to keep throughput in the public safety system, and this is something I've learned since I've been in office. A good person makes a bad choice and maybe ends up in jail. That person is incarcerated and needs to see a judge, and the DA is the one, the DA's office is the one that opens up the law, the black and white book of the law, it says this is what we're charging and this is why we're charging it, and the judge gets to see that case. Then that person either stays and gets released and there's a whole process that happens, but keeping every piece flowing is very important. When I got into office, I always thought I was really having a hard time with the current DA, but when I figured out that throughput in the office is happening, people that are in jail are being seen by a judge, we made sure to keep that going. So that's the underlying story about a district attorney's office from my view, I'm not an expert in it. I'm looking forward to the transition, I think it's going to go well. We do have great staff in the district attorney's office, they know how to make the processes go. The district attorney definitely has the authority to assign people to their positions, but everybody knows their position now and they all just need to get to know each other. I think it's going to be very positive for our community.
Thank you. Toni, do you believe that the county's contribution to mental health services are adequate?
Mental health services, so we do have a large public health department, behavioral health is part of that. Behavioral health is mental health plus addiction. In fact, that's something that, when I heard that one day, I'm like, oh, I see what we're talking about. Behavioral health, mental health plus addiction. We've got 10,000 new people in January of this year on Medicaid and Oregon Health Plan since Cover Oregon and the ACA has come into place. We've got a lot of those contracted through the state. A lot of the dollars come through, the size, the number of people that we serve is, are paid for by a group of dollars that come back through the state. We do, as commissioners, we have the funds from the general fund and we do send some dollars to our health department. So it's a question if we should send more.
Do you feel that they're adequate?
They're adequate, yes, they are adequate, yes.
As a follow-up, would you, they're being adequate, you wouldn't add additional funds, you wouldn't take funds away, you would look for more development than mental services?
So being the budget authority, every year, we lock ourselves in a room for about five days and we have all the departments come through, and there's a lot of give and take in the departments, and it does boil down to how much of a general fund need is there in any department. Community justice and all the different departments that we have have their traditional funding, the district attorney's offices have the general fund, and their requests, so we do balance those every year.
Councilor Barron?
I don't know if we'll ever have adequate funding for mental services, mental health services here. I don't know that any county could. It has gotten to be such, gotten to be such a growing issue here. When I was going through, the county does something called County College, where you attend 10 weeks of classes with the county and each week you learn about a different department. One of the weeks, we went out to the facilities and learned about behavioral health and learned about public health and what the county provides there, and the staff were amazing. What they do with as little as they get is phenomenal. And then we went to, a week we spent at the sheriff's office and toward the jail, and I'll tell you, it was sobering to see what our sheriff's department is faced with on a daily basis with public safety and mental illness. So I don't know that we're going to get to a place where there's adequate funding. I will look for and try to find more funding for this community to address that for our public safety sake and for our community in general.
So can I just follow up? So after review, you did feel or did not feel that the county had adequate funding or you did feel that they had adequate funding?
I don't feel that they do, and that's going to be the dilemma. Getting dollars from the state is going to be critical. Will I lobby at our legislature? You bet. That's something that we also could put a lot of money towards and need to invest that in helping prevent crime from individuals that are facing mental illness. And I think treating that at the onset rather than pushing them through a system and back out onto the street.
And we thought we would end with kind of a fun question and start with Councilor Barron. What would surprise people to know about you?
Gosh, what would surprise people to know about me? I have four tattoos, five if you count the one I covered up. And they all have significant meanings and I'd be happy to talk about that sometime. But most people don't realize I do keep them covered at most public events.
You want some bonus there. And Commissioner DeBonne, what about you?
I have no tattoo. Once a year, I like to pretend to be a farmer. We cut and bale a 50-acre field of grass hay and keep some old equipment running. You know, there's nothing better than driving a tractor in the dead of summer, eight hours at a time, hoping the baler's not going to break and making sure there's hydraulic oil in the swamper. So I, and I really do get into that. I enjoy making sure all that equipment works and, you know, if I could do that and make a profit, I might try to do that, too. Yeah, yeah. Is that looking very, yeah, yeah. So yeah, try to be a farmer once a year.
Well, this ends the portion where we ask you the moderated questions. However, we're all anticipating what it is you're going to ask of one another. And as we mentioned earlier, they each get an opportunity to ask two questions and you have 90 seconds to respond. And of course, if you're not satisfied, like ourselves, we need a follow-up, you may ask it, and then you have 60 more seconds to respond. So with that note, it looks like we start with you, Commissioner DeBonne. What question would you like to start out asking Councilor Barron?
According to a recent poll by Cascade Policy Institute, 84% of Oregonians support allowing union employees to leave their union without force or penalty. 83% of Americans nationwide support employees having the ability to freely decide whether to join or leave a labor union. It is also clear that many of our own county employees agree. Jody, a substantial percentage of your large donors with one additional smaller regenerative donation come from labor unions. Should you get elected, would you support Deschutes County employees who prefer to freely join or leave labor union, or will you succumb to union pressure to force county employees to join the labor union?
First of all, I support county employees, period, whether they're unionized or not. I have a great record at the city of Bend of working with our unions. We have three, police, fire, and COBEA, the City of Bend Employees Association. I have built trust and collaboration with all three units, which is why I'm supported by the Bend Firefighters Association. I support the employees that live and work and serve our communities. So I will support our unionized and non-unionized members of the county if I'm elected, and I won't use their bargaining time as a political platform. I will put my most sincere thoughtful intent into negotiating on behalf of the public.
Yeah, a follow-up to that?
Well, so the question is, would you force county employees to join the labor unions?
I wouldn't force county employees to join a labor union. I would bargain their contract like I have at the city. I would have a fair bargaining process and I would, after that, abide by the contract that's created between the county and the Employees Union Association.
All right, Councilor Barron, your opportunity to ask the first question of Commissioner DeBonne?
So Toni, on your website, you state that Deschutes County is respected around the state for providing appropriate services in a cost-effective manner, and I completely agree. But then you also say in the May voters pamphlet that you'll pledge to hold the line on county spending and expansion. I'm not sure I can trust that when your actions tell a different story. I'll give you an example. In a September 6, 2012 article by Bend Chamber President Tim Casey, you readily supported a $10.9 million proposal to expand the jail, selling bonds and repaying them from the sheriff's fund and the general fund. It was actually Commissioner Bailey that pushed to consider alternatives first because voters had rejected the levy in 2010, which Commissioner Unger also supported. You were the one spending and expanding. Your vote against the budget in this election year appears to be a political play that you called a, that pizza a year per property owner. My question is, have you ever voted to hold the line on expansion of your own pay increase and not taken it?
My pay increase? So I've been in office for four fiscal years now. I think there was no pay increase offered the first year. I guess it's not real clear, and there may have been a discussion of a pay increase that we did decline at one point. And I know this year there has been a pay increase. One of the issues you have is getting too far separate from other agencies, other counties around the state. So yes, I have definitely turned down a pay raise in my tenure.
My question was, did you vote against a pay raise?
Vote against it for myself? No.
All right, is that complete both your answers? All right. Councilor Barron, your opportunity to ask your second and final question to Commissioner DeBonne?
So my second and final question. Integrity is important in leadership. When you ran in 2010, it was reported that you were a quote, "career Air Force man." In May's voters pamphlet and currently on your campaign homepage, you state, "I worked as an observatory operator and software engineer for the Air Force," but the county website and other publications say you were working as a military contractor. I know veterans and even citizens who've never served are offended when people assert military service for political gain, so I'll be direct. Have you ever been enlisted as a service member or officer of the US Air Force or any other branch of our military?
I have not.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeBonne, your final question, Councilor Barron?
You were on the city planning commission before you were appointed to the Bend City Council in December of 2008. Six years ago, as the newest councilor, your first votes were to pass several critical plans for the successful expansion of the urban growth boundary, water, sewer, and transportation. Urban growth boundary was remanded by the state, now the water plan is in the courts and the sewer plan is still changing today. Successful, critical expansion is still years away. My question, given that you have championed these plans and have been a council member in a leadership position without the job getting done, how would you be successful at the county level?
I listen to the public and I stand by my votes. When we revisited our water project and the pipeline, I was willing to listen to the public, I was willing to reconsider my position on two key points, and after spending a few more months revisiting and re-studying that and getting new information, I came to the same conclusion. So I think a thoughtful public process is critical to making good decisions. Yes, I voted for the urban growth boundary expansion. Yes, I've been working on its remand, and I hope we deliver a better product to the state. We knew parts of it were going to come back. We didn't realize it would take this long. We've had a huge success with our sewer infrastructure advisory group, and honestly, I'm a little offended that you would diminish that group's work and effort on our sewer infrastructure because it has shown to be extremely successful at bringing converse opinions together in a room and coming up with a solution. I'm not afraid to walk into tough situations and to reach out to people I don't agree with to come up with a good answer. So I intend to do that at the county commission as well.
All right, is that to your satisfaction, Michelle? Okay. So thank you to you both. At this point, this is where we will close this portion of this. Councilor Barron, you have an opportunity right now for your closing comments, two minutes, please.
Well, thanks for coming. This has been a great evening. We have two months to the election and I hope you all feel better informed. If there are any things we didn't cover tonight, please don't hesitate to call or email me. My contact information is on my website, jodyforddeschutes.com, and I'll be available still tonight. Running for office is interesting. Ultra progressives think I'm not progressive enough, ultra conservatives think I'm not conservative enough. To pretend I lean towards one extreme or the other would be disingenuous. It's not just, it's not who I am and it's not who I'll be if I'm elected. Being in the moderate middle, I realize I have to explain a bit more how I arrive at my decisions because I treat each my decisions, because I treat each one with the authentic intent of serving you to the best of my ability. Will I be perfect? Not likely. Will we always agree? Probably not. But I commit to giving you my best. I commit to serving you with integrity, humility, and transparency. It's important that you know you are why I'm seeking this office. You are why I'm willing to work so hard to win this election, to serve you full-time as your county commissioner. I need your vote this November, or October if you vote early. Some people do that. I will continue to find positive solutions for Deschutes County that ensure the mobility, expand higher education, and enhance a vibrant economy. Please join me, and together in service, our quality workmanship will show for generations to come, and we might just have a little fun along the way. Thanks again for coming.
Thank you, Councilor Barrow. Commissioner DeBonne, your closing comments, please.
Each one of your elected county commissioners, as one of your, as one of your elected county commissioners, I represent all the people in Deschutes County. I live in the Lapine area and have successfully connected Lapine with the rest of the county. The county's day-to-day business has not been in the news. We are getting the job done. We do not need to be noisy to be good. I help manage and solve problems before they become issues. Groundwater protection in the rural county is the issue that got me involved, and the citizens, state agencies, as well as the county are working together for long-term solutions. We have clean, abundant supply of groundwater, and I want to help protect it. I support Goal 11, exception that will allow sewer systems where appropriate on existing properties. Thank you to the Bend Chamber for producing this event. Kathy and I chose to live where she grew up, live the best life possible while our son is in school. We love camping, fishing, golfing, courses, the Four Seasons, and especially the people of Central Oregon. I'm a family man, a small business owner. I have a high-tech background. I am honored to be one of your Deschutes County Commissioners, and I'm asking for your vote in November.
All right. A huge round of applause to both our candidates. This portion is optional to those of you that are here right now. I want to thank again Erin Switzer from The Source and Kelly Blair from News Talk 1110, keeping me entertained tonight. And to all of you, once again, for being here. So, if you would please, with a quick show of hands, if you have a question or a follow-up on your mind. There's one, Steve, see in the room. Two, three, four, five, six. Of course you, Derek. Absolutely. So, if I could have you stand up real quickly, please. The first hand I saw was right here. And who is it to? And say who you are real quickly.
Dave Lewis to Jody and Barrow. Thanks to both of you. We appear to have a consumer, a consuming economy as opposed to producing economy. I'm very concerned about jobs, and I want to ask a very specific question. If both of you can answer, I'd love it. How is the job created? Who does it, and what will you do to make sure that happens?
Again, if you could limit your answers to roughly 90 seconds or under, that'd be very helpful.
Well, I'll answer that. I think, I've been interviewed on this before and will stay consistent, I don't think it's government's role to create the jobs. I think our markets do that. I think you're absolutely right. We need to move into a production-based economy. That's why I support a lot of our local farmers. That's why I support growing industries here that are going to be exporting things. Our brewing, fermenting, distilling industry is a great manufacturing component of our region that also has a system in place for sending spent grain to our farmers that utilizes the award-winning water that we have here to produce award-winning products. So, I think that's going to be a key component on our manufacturing side. Moving into technology, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure in place to grow technology businesses here, and we need a higher education force that can feed into that industry as well. So, I think we need to get to a place where we are sending more intellectual capital and product capital away from our region rather than bringing it in and just consuming.
I'd say a job is created when you charge a fee for a product or a service, or you add value to a raw material, grow something or create something. You know, so we're not getting real specific there, but adding value, providing a product or a service, trade in sectors, the concept of being able to sell it somewhere else and bring those dollars back to our area also.
All right, I saw a couple of us on hand here, here, and here. Okay.
Brian Stalkup, Sherbroe Wells Strategies. This is really for both of you, two sides of the same coin. Jody, what's the one thing that you've learned campaigning that you didn't know before you started? And Tony, what's the one thing that you learned since you've become a commissioner that you didn't know that you didn't know?
The one thing I've learned from campaigning that I didn't know before, two things. That my family loves me more than I could have ever imagined, and they support me in what I'm doing. I knew they did, but I'll tell you, running for county commissioner is very different than running for city council, and my family has shown up in spades. My in-laws and my husband and my kids are phenomenal. The other thing is, when you're passionate about something, you're willing to put the time and energy into it, and that's one thing that I knew I would, I would do. I didn't anticipate so many 12-hour days, but I am happy to put in that time if it gets me the job that I will love doing.
Mentioning 12-hour days, I remember my opponent four years ago mentioned a 12-hour day, I'll put it at 12-hour day. 15 hours is easy to hit sometimes. What I've learned is, since being in this position, which I didn't know, we are the governing body for the 911 County White Service District. We're the governing body for the Blackview Ranch Police, Sun River Police and Fire. So, we reconvene in multiple hats. Every board meeting, we pay bills. The 4-H extension service has got a small tax rate. We pay those bills every week. The debt service for the library system. The library has its district, but there was debt service for the libraries in Bend and Sun River, and we are the governing body for that debt service. So, it's really interesting seeing how the money connects together, the tax dollars when bonds get paid annually. We spend $1 million a week on our accounts payable, and that would be only $52 million a year. We have a $300 million budget, so I've learned a lot being a county commissioner.
Thank you, Bob. We have another question here.
Hi. My question is, happy to do with Deschutes County and the difference both of you are. Deschutes County is very diverse, but it's not diverse ethically, it's diverse from a lifestyle perspective. Tony, you've identified yourself as a person who lives in Lapine and likes to farm on the side. And Jody, you're a person who lives in downtown Bend, serves as Bend City Councilor, and seem to have a fairly urban perspective to things. What I'd like to know from both of you is, how can you represent the people who are not what you are right now? How can you represent the different interests, which is all of Deschutes County, rather than just the area that you come from?
I can take it first. I did grow up in a suburb of Detroit, Michigan, so there's cultural diversity, and, you know, Detroit proper is having a tough time, but southeastern Michigan is doing fine, so I just, just deal with the chuckles there. I went to school at Northern Michigan University, 500 miles away in a small town right in Lake Superior. So, I really kind of yearn for being outside of a big city, but I grew up in that large city. I went to Honolulu for about six months, and I found out that there isn't like a million people there, and I went to Maui, and that's where I was for almost 10 years. Met my wife there 20-something years ago. We were in Seattle for a while, so now we've moved down here. So, I know, I've lived in urban areas. We've owned homes and run businesses in a few of those areas. So, I have the experience. I understand. I choose to live in the rural part of the county right now. We do live 30 miles south of here. But I mean, I have experienced riding the bus in a large urban area, seeing, you know, just dense highways. It's very interesting, living outside of the City of Bend now and having my office here and being on the Metropolitan Planning, MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, thinking about what do we need to be doing 10 and 20 years from now to really cut off at the pass and really heavy congestion in the area. And that's what I think about when I think of Bend and transportation.
This is another one of those, what do people not know about you? I know right now in my life, I do seem more urban, because I've lived in Bend for a while. Was actually born in Redmond, grew up in Terabon, Redmond, Bend, and Sun River. So, having lived out in Terabon, I'll tell you, my kids get really tired driving around this county and hearing me point out all the different houses we lived in when we were doing different projects around, and pointing out the farm that we had, the pasture land that we had, the irrigation ditch that my sister and I used to float our inner tubes on, on our property. I understand rural, because so much of my family still is and has property in the county. I have no problem getting dirty. Tonight, I'm very dressed up. This is, you know, what I would wear as your county commissioner if I was going to the office, but throw on a pair of jeans and boots and getting to work, not a problem. I'm used to that, and I'm used to being out in our county, and I have grown up with both experiences. And I think recognizing the diversity and how cool it is that Redmond has a personality, sisters in Lapine have different personalities. Our communities aren't the same, and they shouldn't be. So, for me, it's celebrating that strength of this county and the diversity within it.
Well, this ought to be an interesting question, because it's either from your colleague or your potential colleague, so grateful to her.
It's a point of clarification. So, I appreciate the conversation about the UGB, and our meeting is at the same time as a board work session. So, as a chair of the Board of Commissioners, it's difficult to be there two places at once. But my question is back to the fair share question, and it's more to Jody, but I would also like to hear from my current colleague, Tony. 19% of the employees of the Aspey Union pay dues right now. Will you, as of January of 2015, require the remainder of those employees to pay dues?
I think that's something that will have to be discussed in bargaining. I think, I know that the other units and unions at the county do have fair share language in their contracts. So, I would support fair share language if that's what the county employees were asking as a unit of their county commissioners in the negotiations and bargaining. I do support that moving forward. But if, as a bargaining unit, they don't have that support, then I wouldn't. So, that's something that we'll also have to look at the landscape of the contract, but I have in the past supported fair share language and its consistency with other contracts that are held by the county.
So, I currently do not support a fair share requirement of an employee to be required to pay for union dues being represented in Deschutes County. We do have 300 people or so represented by a group that is asking for that at this point in time.
Is that, all right. Another question here?
Questions? Hi. First of all, I'd like to say that I think the county's lucky to have two high caliber candidates. Hi. I'd like to say that I think the county's lucky to have two high caliber candidates run. I know that you've got some ideological issues and so on and so forth, but what I haven't heard either one of you say is, why do you want the job? I know that I've been in some political environments before, and it can be incredibly bankless, and I'm just curious what's motivating you. Why do you want the job?
I want this job because I love serving the public. Right now, I split my time between being an educational assistant and a city councilor. And for me, it's about moving into full-time public service. For someone of my faith, we often will say, we're called to something, and that's something that I feel driven towards is public service. I feel that I can show up and I can humbly represent you. My agenda is simply to serve, and I want to do this because of the public benefit that I probably won't even see long after I'm gone. I mean, part of why I ran in the first place was because I was reading documents at the planning commission, and I recognized names of people who were friends with my parents and grandparents when I was a kid, and I realized I'm now a grown-up, and I have to make decisions that are going to impact my kids and the next generation behind them and behind them. So, I am putting forethought into everything I do. So, I'm doing it not for me, but for you and for our kids and for the next generation. That's why I show up every day and why I want to serve.
So, I mentioned my son going to school for the 12 years. One of our goals was, as a family, was to be in the same place for those 12 years. You know, my opponent says she's moved around a lot, which is interesting. Well, my life experience was going to the same school with my brothers, in fact, the same school that my mom went to, for all the same 12 years, a cohort of kids, all got to go to school together, and that was my dedication. I got on the Park and Recreation District Board, the Pine Park and Recreation District. It's a five-person board. I sat there quietly, learned about the process and everything that was going on, voted, got involved. All of a sudden, I ended up becoming the chairperson of the Park District Board. It was controversial. It was unfunded. We were recycling park cans. I mean, I paid some dues, but I found out that when I was running the board meeting, I disagreed vehemently with the two of the board members sometimes, but we always got to a vote. We respected each other's position, and we started moving forwards, even though all five people didn't agree. I found out I had a knack for this governing body thing. I didn't know I'd be the county commissioner. All of a sudden, one day, you know, Mike Daley's here and Dennis Lick were in office at the time years ago, and I really got involved and got to know these guys. And it was election time, and the groundwater protection issue, rural county representation, representation from Lapine, were all just kind of a line for me. I did not know I'd be doing this the year before, but yeah, when we started running for office, I went full speed ahead, and I'm honored to be doing it.
Hello, good evening. So, we'll get right to it. For both candidates, Ballot Measure 88, illegal immigrant temporary driver's license. Want to know your position on that. Ballot Measure 91, legalization of marijuana.
I'm going to be a no on both of those, in fact. So, the driver's card, it just provides a great area for somebody that's in this country illegally. And I support immigration and immigrants, and immigrant is person that is leaving a country to find a better life for themselves, so I'm not opposed to the immigrant process. Providing a driver's card is going to maybe slow down the process of becoming a citizen. You're not going to be as motivated, but it also could welcome a criminal group of citizens from, not citizens, from other states. People would come to our state and looking for that driver's card, just they have something with their name on it, a picture that's from a state, so we do not want to do that. No on marijuana. Marijuana triggers mental problems. It can lead to other complications. Life addiction is a very bad problem. I'm not looking for another way to relax or whatever this may be, so I have just no on marijuana for me.
Well, thanks for the question, Sheriff Blanton. I knew this was probably coming. We had a lively discussion last week about this, and as much as I really respect the sheriff, we came to different conclusions. And so, I do support Measure 88, the Oregon driver's card, and here's why. It upholds a four-year limited driver card for those who can't prove legal presence in the United States. Whether you're a veteran, a senior, or you're whatever, you have the ability to get a driver's card. It was passed by our legislature, bipartisan support, both the House and the Senate, and signed by the governor. So, the vote is affirming the legislature's action. That also goes in line with some of the other states have done. We've been watching Colorado, Connecticut, Illinois, Maryland, Nevada, New Mexico. We’ve been watching Colorado, Connecticut, Illinois, Maryland, Nevada, New Mexico, Utah, Vermont, Washington. California, Texas, and Minnesota are also looking at driver card issuances. I’ve also looked into who supports and opposes this, and groups like the Oregon Business Association, the Oregon Center for Christian Voices, the Oregon Dairy Farmers Association, the Oregon Farm Bureau, the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association are just a few in the long list supporting it. So I do support this, because I do think it’s good for business, I think it will keep our roads safe, and I believe our immigration issues will be addressed at the federal level and not at our county level. Of course, we will implement whatever is passed or not by the voters. Oh, marijuana. So I support the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act. I do not support the current proposal under measure 91, because I don’t think we’ve given our public safety officers the tools to keep the public safe if it passes. And that’s something that really concerns me, as well as access for children to a controlled substance. I don’t think that’s been fully vetted yet. I think we need more time before we pass something like this in the state of Oregon. So I oppose measure 91.
Alright, thank you to both of you. We have time for one final question, and then we’ll move into networking. And of course, you get to take us out with a bang. Derek Sitter, the owner of Volcanic Theater Pub, who graciously trades with us for this in sponsorship.
Thank you. I’m excited I get the last question. You’d think I might jump right on the noise ordinance, but actually, I think the noise ordinance was taken care of by the city council last year, and it’s just getting the chief of police and the new judge on the same page was a little difficult, but we did that. My question is a much, much more serious question, and it involves something that Kelly brought up earlier, and that is, how do we deal with behavioral health in Deshutes County? It’s a much, much larger issue than budget. I do find the budget really inadequate, but I also find the treatment of it and the approach to it inadequate. And my question is, how would you remove the stigma from mental health issues and maybe the symptoms, which may be addiction, to mental health? Remove mental from the illness part, and just look at them as sick as you would a cancer patient? And then how would you treat them and completely restructure how we handle someone who is ill, and maybe the consequences and symptoms that follow someone with a mental health issue? How would you look at that differently?
Obviously, a few words, I’m not going to go real deep into this. We have added support for health needs in our jail, so if we’re putting somebody, incarcerating somebody that really just needs mental health, we’re very sensitive to that. We’ve got a lot of great professionals that are working very hard with this. It is a statewide issue. I support your passion on this subject. It’s not my area, though. I mean, I’m not going to be able to speak much more.
Great question, Derek. I think we do need to remove the stigma, so I think that begins by talking about it, by addressing it, by not ignoring it and pushing it to the side. I think there are a lot of great programs in all of our communities that we need to support. I know that the county does fund some of those through their lottery dollars, because they provide services that wouldn’t otherwise be covered at the county. So for me, how you treat it, you have to meet the person where they are. You have to show up where they are. People aren’t going to always come to you. When we were working in a collaborative group with the Pocket Park next to the library, there were a lot of individuals that had mental illnesses, that needed to have proper medication, that needed to have some lifestyle adjustments that they were willing to make, that they wanted to see things change. But because they didn’t have access to some of the services, that’s why the county, to their credit, put someone in, a social worker at the library, to come and meet people where they are. So it’s things like that that I would continue to support. I think we need to take away the stigma of mental illness and address it as an illness, and then we need to make sure we’re meeting people in the community and through services the way that they can best be served, not the way we think they can best be served.
Alright, again, a round of applause and thanks to our candidates for the Deshutes County County Commissioners, all of you. Please grab your surveys, fill them out, and turn them in to the lady in green and the lady in white up in the front here. And of course, we welcome you next month for the Bend City Council Candidates Forum. Again, thank you, Erin and Kelly, and thank you, Jody and Tony. Have a good night. Time to network.